Hi. Hello, everyone.
Hey, the Human Rights Commission has arrived.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm not them. I'm just me.
The host has muted me. I haven't muted myself. Hey, Jamie.
Oh, so where is the view that I can see when people have their hands up? I've been using Teams a lot.
Go to the upper right corner and there's a little grid that says view.
Yeah.
You can toggle through it. You want to select the gallery view.
Okay, I have the gallery view. Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure before we get started.
And Melissa, you can also, if you, on the bottom, you can click on the participants button and it'll open a participants list on your right and you can see there's a lot of people that are not on by video.
Okay.
Do you see that? There should be a long list or 14 participants that have joined the call. Of whom five or six of them have not joined the video.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Hey, Mary, Roger.
Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, it's 6:33, so go ahead and get started. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. Um, I guess we'll go ahead and first approve the agenda, as everyone had a chance to review it. Any major changes? The only thing I've been thinking about since we put the agenda out is just kind of condensing, and I've had discussions with both Jackie and Rod. I just wanted to make clear that, you know, everyone got the information, got the packet. I'm assuming everyone has reviewed it. So we won't be doing, you know, formal, formal presentations of what is in the packet. I'll assume everyone's reviewed it. And I'm hoping that we can make it more of a discussion about, you know, the what to do next in taking into account that we've all had a chance to review those things. But other than that, yes, Jeff, Jeff.
I'm a little confused about the difference, but there are two different agenda items about wastewater. There's PC members' questions and continued discussion with planning director. Is there a reason why those are separate items?
Um, I, it was because we had tasked them separate items last time that Jackie would take the planning commission's thoughts and questions that everyone was going to send to her and make a PowerPoint presentation out of that. And that Rod would continue the discussions that he had with us, his separate thoughts, and put them into a separate memo. And that those were both in the packet. So Jackie had put together a presentation that focused, if I, if I understand correctly, I wasn't actually, did not do any of the work. But that's, that was what was done, is that Jackie took ever the planning commission members and put that all on a PowerPoint and Rod did a separate memo.
Yeah, Melissa, if I may, why did you have conversations with Jackie and Rod?
Why? Because I was trying to organize the meeting.
I don't understand. I'm sorry.
I, I'm. Um, I mean, what, I'm just trying to explain the agenda. I, is this a deeper philosophical question?
No, no. Have a conversation with the planning commission. That's my point.
Um, as the chair of the commission, I, there's no reason I can't talk to the planning director or talk to a planning commission member. So that's what I did to check in and on the status of the work and informing the agenda. So it's my understanding that they both had done these separate projects and they were both done and that they were going to be included in the packet. So.
Well, I, I hope we can invite a more inclusive process going forward. That's all I'm going to say.
Okay, well, if there's Jeff LaBelle, I mean, I don't want to make this a big part because we have a lot to talk about.
Yeah, no, I understand. I, I guess my only suggestion is why don't we just have one conversation about wastewater rather than?
Yeah, and that's what I prefer to. Do you think that we need to amend the agenda? Are we okay with how the agenda is set up? I agree. I would rather just have one conversation.
Exactly. I, I recommend that we merge items seven and eight. And, and that it becomes a conversation about, you know, next steps on wastewater issues.
Great. Is it, anyone want a second that?
Second. We don't have.
We, we don't have a motion on the table yet.
Oh, I thought you actually made the motion. Would someone like to make?
I, I move that we, that we approve the agenda with the, you know, change that I recommended to merge item seven and eight.
Okay, then Leah, because I am looking at you right now. You want a second? And then I'll do a roll call. Jackie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian Loeb, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Jeff Goodrich, how do you vote?
Abstain.
Um, and I vote yes. And I think that's everyone.
I, I vote yes, too.
Yes, you do. Okay, there's so many people on, I'm having trouble seeing. Okay, Rod, you got that? Uh, you're muted, Rod.
I believe it's five, one, is that correct? Oh, five, zero, one, is that correct?
That is correct. Okay, so meeting objectives. We're going to appoint the planning commission members to the Article 36 Energy Task Force, as we've been requested to do by the select board. We are going to have a discussion on wastewater. And at some point, we're going to get an update from Tom Candon, the MSC Board Chair on Wastewater. He had another meeting and so he is just going to pop in when he can. And I told him that he could have the floor whenever he can get here. So he's just going to give us a 10 minute. Jamie, did you have an update on Tom?
Um, two things. It's, it's MCS, Marion Cross School. So through some of your documents, it's, it's listed incorrectly as MSC. Just for everybody out there, it's MCS. That's the school's moniker. And Tom should probably be joining us sooner than he had originally thought in his email to you.
Okay.
In the interim, you get me.
Great. Well, thank you. Okay, and now we have comments from the public. I am gonna just, we are going to reserve comments from the public again because we have so much to cover in this meeting to the beginning and the end. And we are going to stick strictly to the five-minute time period, both at the beginning and the end. For both PC members and the public, I am going to ask that comments be respectful. You know, we don't want public, personal attacks on anyone. If we start getting into personal attacks, I will ask Rod to use the mute button and, you know, people will be stopped from talking until we can maintain, get back to maintaining a certain decorum that we expect at these meetings. So with that said, could I get people to raise their hand if they plan to make a public comment at the beginning of this meeting?
Melissa, I don't have the ability to raise my hand because I, I don't have visual. I just want to say, as a member of the public.
Well, before you, I, I just want to get a feel of, are you speaking as a member of the public as opposed to a planning commission member?
I am trying to speak as a member of the public.
Okay, I just want to get, so Jeff wants to speak as a member of the public. Stuart Richards wants to speak as a member of the public. Does anyone else want to speak as a member of the public? Okay, so, um, Jeff, you have two and a half minutes and Stuart, you will have two and a half minutes.
I don't, I don't need two and a half minutes. I just want to say, if members of the commission or members of the public would like to interrupt or direct hate speech toward me, I'm going to sign off from this meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Jeff, Stuart. Uh, Stuart, you're muted.
How about now? Am I unmuted?
You are unmuted.
Very quick question. So the agenda calls for 15 minutes of public comment at the end of the agenda. Is that incorrect?
No, I guess, I'm sorry, I didn't realize that we had scheduled 15 minutes. So we'll revisit that at the end of the meeting, time permitting.
Thank, thank you for clarifying.
Okay, and is that?
That's, that's, that's the only question I had.
Okay, well, uh, then we got some bonus time. Okay, next on the agenda, we need to review and approve the minutes from January 28th, 2020. Um, as Jackie.
Motion to approve.
Any comment discussion?
We need a second. Yeah.
Yeah, any second. Leah. Leah, did you have any comment? I just saw you had a look of displeasure on your face.
Don't worry about my, don't worry about my face.
Okay, well, let me know if something, something's up. Okay, any discussion? Uh, Brian.
Thanks, Melissa. Um, I missed the last 10 minutes of the meeting, but it was only Jeff LaBelle's update on the Affordable Housing Subcommittee's progress, of which I'm a part. So if people feel like I should recuse myself or abstain, sorry, from, uh, from voting on the minutes, let me know. Otherwise, I plan to vote yes, because I, I know what Jeff said.
I'm fine with that.
I think we need to ask the Senate parliamentarian about whether we violate the bird rule.
Well, with all due respect, it's up to Brian whether he recuses himself.
Yep, just ask for input. Um, if anyone feels strongly, let me know.
All right, I will do a roll call. Uh, Jackie?
Yes.
Jeff LaBelle?
Yes.
Brian Loeb, big moment.
Yes, for me.
Leah Romano?
Yes.
Jeff Goodrich?
Abstain.
Ernie? Chickatelli? Uh, you're muted.
You can just give us a big thumbs up.
Yeah.
Thumbs up.
All right. Great. Uh, announcements, reports, update and correspondence. Um, Rod, I didn't see any correspondence.
There's no correspondence this month. And there's, there's no updates of significance.
Okay, great.
Melissa.
Jeff might have one.
Oh, did you have one, Jeff?
Well, there's just one thing is that I, I, I had, um, sent down a memo that I would like to be added to the record. Since I send it to all the commission members and so I don't know if this is the right time to do that or how, how that gets done. I was hoping it could make it into the packet, but didn't seem to have appeared there. It contained some ideas that go kind of beyond what's in Jackie's presentations. I thought it'd be helpful to share.
Okay, um, I, I did see something on that. I saw, I mean, I read your addition. Does anyone have any objections to that being added to the record?
No, no.
Do we need to make a motion?
Um, we should at least do the same roll call, please.
Okay, do you, do you think we need to do a motion, Jeff?
I'd like to make a motion then, that Jeff LaBelle's addition is accepted in this, for this meeting.
Okay, okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Um, Ernie?
Um, since I've been having issues with my computer, could you explain what, what, what we're voting on right now?
Jeff had sent a memo that he had drafted about the wastewater issues under discussion to the entire planning commission. That I, he had sent to Jackie as well and I, she incorporated some of it, but not the whole thing. And so he wanted the entire thing incorporated into the record.
Okay, um, I don't recall receiving that.
It came out today. It just came out today.
Yes, yesterday.
Yesterday.
I got it today.
It all blur.
I think the effect of adding it to the record would be, it'll get put up on the website so that the public has access to it. I think they're entitled to.
Okay, um, are we ready to do, oh, sorry, Brian?
Just maybe to Rod what, what the mechanics are, if this gets included with the minutes or appended to the packet, how folks can access the materials.
I think at this point, it'll get added to the minutes, at the back of the minutes. I think that's the, that's the safest place for people to find it. Um, I mean, it's not a, I don't want to bore people with the details, but it's, it's, I mean, it's, it's not like we're in a quasi judicial setting or anything. It's just that the packet went out literally like the night before. Um, and so it was like, yeah, now I'm in this weird situation where if I throw it in the packet and then do it all over again, people are going to get confused. I'm happy to put it in the minutes that people are happy with that, that where, if that's where it lives, you know? And then, and then it's, it's germane, it's germane to the minutes because I'm assuming that you're going to get to discuss it at some point. A bit, it's no, you know, if it was added to the packet, somebody might not go back to the packet. And they might just read the minutes and still not see it. So I think it's probably more visible as part of the minutes.
Yeah, let's move on. I think this is fine.
Yeah, Ernie, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, just, just, just a quick thing. I think, because I haven't seen the, the, this, this memo or anything like that. I have no idea what we're talking about. I'm not sure, you know, what, if, if it should be included on the record or not. I don't know anything about it. I can't find it in my emails either, so I don't have a copy of it to even view even after the meeting. So.
Okay, so maybe. I'll send you another copy, Ernie. You were copied on the email, but I'll send it again. Okay.
Hey, hey, Melissa, if I may, one quick thing.
Yeah.
I just sent an email to everyone. I don't have access to chat or hand signals. There's something going on with Zoom for me. So I'm going to have to speak up if I have a question. Thank you.
Okay, um, are you by phone or on the computer?
I am on a computer.
But it's not allowing you to put up your hands.
I'm trying to share with you all. I can't do chat and I can't raise a hand.
Okay, well, thanks for letting us know. Jackie?
I'm sorry, I just have a question. So Jeff, are you a member of the planning commission now or a member of the public? I'm not clear. I just want to get clear. That's all.
Melissa, is that a question for me?
Um, I think Jackie is asking if, I can ask you if you want. Um, are you, are you speaking as a member of the planning commission or as a member of the public right now?
I am a member of the planning commission.
Okay, because earlier, but, okay, you're a member of the planning commission. That is noted. Okay, are we ready to do a roll call about the motion to add the Jeff's memo to the minutes? Leah, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Ernie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jeff Goodrich, how do you vote?
Hi.
Uh, Brian, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jeff LaBelle, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jackie, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Melissa votes yes.
So seven, zero. Thank you, Ron.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we've been asked by the select board to appoint someone to the Article 36 Task Force. And I know the next question is, what is the Article 36 Task Force? In March 2019, the town of Norwich advised through the passing of Article 36, all town officials to take immediate and sustained efforts to gradually and continually reduce the town's direct use of fossil fuels, beginning at a rate of no less than 5% per year, starting in the 2019, 20 and continuing until they're eliminated entirely. This task force will initiate work towards an aggressive and comprehensive work plan to achieve the elimination of direct fossil fuels in the town of Norwich. The task force will be comprised of five members as follows. One member of the energy committee, one member of the planning commission, one select board member and two community members appointed by the select board through their application appointment process. That's, you know, a brief overview. I can send you more information if you need it, but does anyone want to volunteer or volunteer someone else? Ernie?
I'll volunteer. I think, you know, 20 years of engineering, mechanical engineering experience and, which included green energy sources and so on. You know, would qualify me for such a position.
Okay, does anyone else have any interest? Or, um, does anyone want to support Ernie in taking, uh, doing this position? Brian?
I just ask, is, is there a requirement or any kind of implication that Ernie reports anything back from that group to us or we just send him on his way? Do we ever hear what this group does other than publicly? Do you have any sense of that?
Um, I don't know if it's actually in the requirements, but I'm sure we could ask Ernie to report back to us and Ernie would do so.
I, I was just going to say, you know, it is probably no prohibition against reporting back and since they are looking for someone from this commission, there's a, I, I would say there's an implicit connection between the two groups. And, you know, it's not just you throwing somebody out there from this commission randomly. I think there's a, it's intended that it has something to do with, with planning commission as well.
That'd be great.
So I would have no problem at all reporting, you know, back to the, to the planning commission.
Thanks. Um, Jackie and then Leah.
Yeah, but let's just include it in updates, you know, when we do the affordable housing Subcommittee and other, you know, two, two rivers, whatever. Let's just include it under updates. It's great.
Great, Leah?
Yeah, it's a question about process. Um, so with the request to appoint the planning commission member to the task force, was there background on timeline by when this group is formed and things like that?
Uh, I don't recall that being included. Rod, do you recall?
But I, I know that Linda Gray is here and I'm sure with some background, if, if, if the body wants to spend some time on that now, that's fine, I guess.
Linda, can we put you on the spot?
Hi, yes, but you know, actually, I think you should put Roger Arnold on the spot because he is the, he is the person who drafted the memo that the select board approved.
Okay, I, Roger, can I put you on the spot now?
If, if you would, if that's a request, yes, I'm happy to say. So the, the, there's a major deliverable for this task force to come, I believe there's an August date. There's, there's three things that are required of the group to report back to the select board. One of which includes a method for communicating with other stakeholders who are engaged in this task, which includes your group. Um, and then, uh, an update, a complete update of the greenhouse gas inventory. And there was, um, and then there was one other deliverable, which I confess escapes my memory at this, at this moment. But indeed, by August, there is a request by the, by the select board to hear a midpoint feedback. And at that point, there may or may not be a revise of a timeline goals. Oh, and then the, sorry, and the last thing was, uh, an audit of there to, the committees to audit the, the the charge and to, and to report back us, back to us on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So I don't know if we really need to make a motion on this. If, how do people feel or?
We, we need a motion. I have comments. Once the motion's made and seconded.
Okay.
I, I move, I move to appoint Ernie to this commission.
Is there a second?
Name it.
Jeff LaBelle, thank you.
A second, please amend the motion to add the name of the motion of the committee.
Okay.
36 Energy Task Force.
Thanks, Brian. Um, any discussion?
Yes, so Melissa, with a motion and second. I'm not going to support the motion if this committee is not going to comply with open meeting law.
Okay. Is any further discussion? Okay, are commission members ready to vote?
Yes.
Okay, roll call. Jackie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jeff LaBelle, how do you vote?
Yes.
Brian Loeb, how do you vote?
Yes.
Leah Romano, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ernie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jeff Goodrich, how do you vote?
Nay.
And Melissa Horowitz votes yes. Okay, thank you, and we will submit your name, Ernie. Okay, so now we are at our wastewater discussion, so it is seven o'clock. One thing. Jamie? Did you have an update?
Interruption. Tom Camden is in the waiting room. Could we please admit him?
Okay, and are we all okay then letting Tom speak first?
Sure, thank, or I don't know, I think let him know that, right? So, you know, might need a minute to compose himself. He's coming right off of the meeting.
Yeah, he did tell me that he had another meeting. Welcome, Tom. Thanks for joining us. I, I had told you that if you wanted to, you know, you could talk whenever you could, could make it here. Are you ready? Do you want to go now?
I'm happy if you want to stick with your agenda, Melissa, it's fine. Wherever you are, I don't, don't squeeze me.
Well, we actually just, this would be a perfect spot because we actually just finished with our last item before this.
Oh, okay.
So if you're, if you're good.
Sure.
We're good. Brian?
Yeah, I have a question for the parliamentarians in the room. I see Neil just joined. That means I'm counting right. Is that three and a quorum of the childcare committee on this call? Does that matter to anyone?
Not if we're not talking childcare.
Uh, Jamie?
I'm curious, we may want to go after everybody has their discussions. They haven't done any of their discussions yet, Tom. And I didn't know if you want to do your update before that or if you want to listen to everybody first.
I, I think it may be helpful for us, if you don't mind, just to hear where, where you guys are at, because we're just kind of trying to figure out what, where the lay of the land is and what's going on and in order to figure out what research and what we need to do and what we need to investigate. So if you don't mind going first, I think that, that might be more helpful for us.
Melissa, to address Brian's question, if I may?
Okay.
This is a public meeting, so there's no concern about OML in the context of this meeting.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Can I, can I just say one thing real quick? I, I think the, we may want to hear from Tom and, you know, at different points in this discussion, but maybe just getting an update from them on the status of their wastewater efforts would be great. And, and just, you know, where they are and what their next steps are and but, you know, could be that as we then have our subsequent conversation, it might be useful if, if Tom is able to stay or Jamie is able to stay and participate in the dialogue, that would be helpful. I think one of the challenges with this whole process is there hasn't been as much dialogue between the town and the school district as would be desirable, and this is a great opportunity to, to work on that. So look forward to having that dialogue.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanted to preserve Tom's time. I just didn't know how much he had to give after coming off another meeting, so. I, but I'm, you know, I just was hoping that he could start by giving us an update.
Sure, I'm happy to do that. And then to address Jeff, I'm, I'm happy to stick around too. The, the, my timeframe was, what has passed already. I needed to be in a meeting before this, but I've got time now. So thank you for your consideration. But I, I mean, my update can be pretty brief here, but I'm happy to open it up to questions and let you know where we're headed from here. And if Jamie thinks I've left anything out, I'm happy to have her jump in and, and correct me where I've gone astray.
That'd be great.
You know, obviously, as we all know, this last year has been pretty challenging for everyone. It's been challenging for the school district too, just trying to keep the kids in the classroom. And Jamie's done an incredible job at that as, as our facilities director, Tony Daigle. So we've still been doing our assessments and trying to make some progress on, on our septic work. But it has been going a little bit slower than we hoped, obviously, because we've had a few other things on our, on our schedule. But we are making progress and as, I'm, I'm not going to get into too much detail because I'm pretty sure everybody here knows where we started in terms of the three options we were looking at with regard to the resolution to the system at Marion Cross, one of which was replacing where it is. We looked at property, peish property up adjacent to the school, considering Dresden Fields properties, and then of course, the connection to the Hartford wastewater system. And over the course of time, have done some testing, obviously, on the Norwich Green, working with pathways. Jeff Goodrich, you just spoke and, and Steve Rizell, who's our hydrogeologist, who's been providing us information as we've needed it on what's going on on the green. And so to be honest with you, lately, I've been, we've been just trying to keep lines of communication open. I see Hannah Tyler is with us tonight, so I spent about an hour with the Hartford Select Board back on February 9th. Because there was a recommendation to the Hartford Select Board to end discussions with the school district about this connection to the Hartford wastewater system. And then to backtrack a little bit again, what our proposal was, was the connection of Marion Cross School with three existing businesses along Route 5 South, the King Arthur, baking, the Co-op Service Center in the Norwich Commerce Park where FOG's hardware is there. The conversation we had with the, the select board that evening did not ultimately end the discussion. Although we did get a clear signal from the select board that they wanted us to work with the town in terms of making a request to them for a connection to their Hartford wastewater system. We, I stepped back a bit since that was only obviously three weeks ago, and in the meantime, we've had the Dresden annual meeting to prepare for and the town meeting to prepare for. So we had a few other things on our plate and figured I would come to the town after that to discuss next steps. And we also needed to pause to figure out what those next steps are, because our interpretation of what we would need to do, since it was just a request for the Marion Cross School and the three area businesses to connect to the wastewater system in Hartford, was that it would be through the school. And since the school is a separate entity, it would mean that the school would have to place the warrant article on our side of the ballot. With the understanding that there would be some things that we would need to work with the town on, rights of way, obviously, if it was to make that connection down the Route 5 corridor. And then for some of the grant opportunities that may be out there and may exist, which you read about, I assume, in Rod's presentation that's coming up next, I think. So that's where we are with regard to the Hartford wastewater system. It was my intention and still is to check in with the Norwich Select Board next to figure out ways ahead with, with that. It's still a little bit confusing to me frankly, to figure out what's next, but that's what I'm hoping is the next part of this conversation is to, to see how we go about that inter municipal request for something that Marion Cross School is asking for the school to oversee. So that'll take some discussion and figuring out what it means to move forward from there. And so hopefully we can do that in the near term here too. In the meanwhile, obviously, we've got some other options still that we're pursuing. We are still looking at what's going on on the green. We're going to do some more testing as soon as the green thaws out and, and try and figure out if there's still a possibility of placement there. We're looking at alternate systems too. We've been in touch. It's been a little bit of a while now, but some of these eco machines that may provide some good opportunities for us to use them both for our purposes of wastewater treatment, but also for educational opportunities as well. And then we need to find a place to put either that or a traditional septic system. And there are some need to reach out to folks in town to see if there are some properties available for that sort of a thing. Obviously, we've still got the green itself. Dresden Fields is obviously a potentially appealing place, although it is a bit of a distance from the school. It is owned by the Dresden School District, and that would take an agreement with the Dresden School District to make that happen. But we'll begin testing there in the springtime as well. And then I, I don't know that I have anything more to update on at this point in time. Going before the presentation that's next, I had noticed the recommendation there. And my only desire is to be able to keep those lines of communication open, because as far as I'm concerned, we've still got some more work to do and to understand what options are still on the table. And we want to be able to present to the town of Norwich, the best option from a cost standpoint, but one that also addresses the needs that the school is obviously facing with its wastewater system. And the other thing too is the timeliness factor. Obviously, we're two years into this review and I, I'd like to, well, I and I think everyone else would like to find a resolution to this in a relatively near term timeframe. And I see Jamie's got her hand up, so if you don't mind, Melissa, I'm sure I've left something out, would like, love her to jog my memory on.
Great, yeah, Jamie, if you don't mind, go ahead.
Good evening, and Tom's very thorough. The only things that I would point out are that really early on, we had reached out to the town to have a discussion with them. And at that point in time, we felt that they were not willing to engage. So that's why we went forward on our own, and I think there's some confusion about that out there. So I don't know if I have an exact email, I don't know if I kept it, but whatever, we, we went forward. I'll probably apologize a little because maybe the unconventional method of moving forward may have been at my suggestion. I'm an operations manager from way back with a background in construction. I also was a select person in Walpole and North Walpole, I live in North Walpole, and we ship our septic to Bell's Falls. So I know things like that exist when you have a need and no other way to fix it. I would add that I did early on speak to town manager of Hanover, Julia Griffin, about our situation. At that point in time, you know, I think she had explained to me that history was that there were conversations at one point with Norwich and Hanover and nothing ever came to fruition there. So at that point, she said that, you know, basically Hanover has moved on and gotten other folks, you know, to join them. I think Lebanon sends quite a bit to Hanover, and perhaps there's one other close by relationship they have. But anyway, we have had conversations with the town of Hanover, who very graciously said if it's the school district and the school district only, and we had nowhere else to go, that they would absolutely make room for us alone. And that's a very expensive proposition, because when you start shipping septic over a, underneath a bridge, it gets really expensive really fast. The other thing in speaking with, I did follow up with Peter Kolbaki just prior to the town of Hartford meeting to just have a better understanding, perhaps from, from their point of view on what, you know, an inter, an inter-town relationship might look like and what some of the challenges from his point of view might be. And so I have notes on that. But, you know, they, you know, everybody has different degrees of what they're willing to take on, and I understand that as well. Plus, New Hampshire's different than Vermont, and that's apparent too. So that's the only thing, and we have looked at some other different options that Tom perhaps haven't mentioned, different locations. And the only reason he probably didn't mention them is because, you know, they're private landowners and we have not sat down formally with any of them to have discussions. So, but we're, we're moving on, so thanks a bunch.
Thank you, Jamie.
And, and Melissa too, the only thing I'll add to that is, is the goal, at least, you know, speaking as one member of the Norwich School Board, obviously, would be potentially a warrant article in the next town meeting.
Okay, that's helpful. Okay, well, great. Thank you both for speaking to us. At, at this point, and I had mentioned this earlier, Tom, I, we have said that we would like to have the next, I think we have 45 minutes allotted just for planning commissioners to, to speak and have a discussion. So members of the public are welcome to obviously stay, but we'll have more time for the comments from the public at the end, but this will be time for planning commissioners to discuss the options before us. Jackie, I think we had discussed, you know, your slides like 10 through 12 about, you know, the process recommendations. Did you want to go to that? Or did you want to do?
Yeah, no, you know, my question is, you know, what can we do to help the school? I mean, that's my question. And, and that is a process question, because I think, you know, it's been awkward finding a way to work together on this. And, and I guess, you know, Jamie just explained, it didn't seem that the town was interested at whatever point they, they were approached. And, and the problem has to be solved, and so the school board is doing their best to try to solve the problem. And then we get to this point, and then the feedback they have is that you need to be working, if Hartford is going to be a solution, you need to work with the town. So I feel like one of the things I'd like to see come out of this meeting is that the town and the school board will, will work together, will help each other to solve this problem. I mean, that's something I would like to see come out of it. So that, I think, addresses a lot of the process question that I think bubbled up from the input that I received as I was trying to put that presentation together.
Okay, Jeff LaBelle?
Yeah. So it's, it, it, I think it's a little challenging to think about how to frame this discussions, but I do want to just take a step back here. So I, I do appreciate that the school has an interest in making a connection to the town of Hartford. And my, my daughter went to Marion Cross, I certainly, I know Brian's kids are going to go to Marion Cross. We all want to solve that problem, so that's definitely something that's on our radar screen. You know, at the same time, the planning commission in the town plan talks about a process for trying to think about a broader, the broader questions of sewer and, and what to do about wastewater in the town. And thinking about the context of, you know, for example, how are we going to ensure there's an adequate availability of housing affordable to people of different incomes and to some of those ideas would require or could benefit from a sewer connection. So there, there is this broader, you know, context, I think, for this. And in fact, at the last meeting, the discussion was not only about how do we help the school, but it was really about how should we think about the pros and cons of, of, of moving forward with investigating a sewer system? And, and, you know, you'll see in my memo that, that's now part of the record, thank you, just that my, my thought is that there is, there is a lot of synergy between what the school wants and what the town could benefit from that's worth exploring further before we make any kind of formal decisions. And I would really encourage us to not just think of this as like a thumbs up or thumbs down kind of decision on what the school wants to do, but really think about this as an opportunity to engage in a conversation between the town and the school district about, about this, you know, is about conceptualizing what, whether there might be an opportunity to work together and to think about this in a, in a different way that would advance multiple objectives, could advance the objectives of the school district, could, you know, help to create affordable housing in the town. It could help to, you know, help with the revitalization of the downtown of Norwich. So I would encourage us not to try to make some final decision about any kind of inter municipal agreement, but rather start a process, an expedited process, but a process for, for having a dialogue that could help us understand the full range of options and whether there might be an opportunity to work together and what that might look like and what are the costs and benefits. So I, I don't have an opinion at the end of the day about whether that's, you know, that, that the benefits will outweigh the costs, but it just strikes me as something we should explore, and it's really frankly, an historic opportunity to have that conversation. And as you'll see, I also think ultimately that we should reach out to the town of Hartford. And as you'll see, I also think ultimately that we should reach out to the town of Hartford and engage in some joint discussions and planning. And we could talk more about it, but I actually think that the Norwich Planning Commission, reaching out to the Hartford Planning Commission. Might be a good next step to really just check in and understand better where they're coming from. And talk about the kind of the parameters of what we're all thinking about and how we could get. Hopefully, you know, investigate the, the reasonableness of, of working together on, on these issues.
Thanks, Jeff. I guess one confusion that I've had that through, through your memo, which I appreciate. But to me, it seems really focused on the sewer option, which just, you know, listening to Tom now. It seems like the school board is considering other options. Besides the sewer option. And I guess are we as the planning commission considering working with the school board? Looking at other options besides the sewer in Hartford?
Is that a question for me or for?
Yeah, I just specifically because I, I noticed with other, like within Jackie's PowerPoint, there seems to be other considerations for other options. That maybe still that we would, you know, team up with the school board for, but I just, just maybe that there's possibilities. That, you know, Hartford may not end up, you know, accepting our waste, not wanting to. Or there may not be an agreement that works. And so is there any other options we can explore together?
Let me just, I know Brian has his hand up, but if I could just address your question.
Yeah, if Brian, then we'll get to you next.
You know, the, the, the. I feel like the goalposts keep moving as to what the nature of this exercise is. When we started this exercise just last month, the question was, you know, what are the pros and cons? Of, of invest, of, of trying to think about working with it. You know, the school district potentially on a, on a, on a shared vision of what a sewer connection might look like. Now, it sounds like we're, we're being asked to opine specifically on a, on a very narrow inter municipal agreement. To support only the school. And I just think that's premature to make that decision and would encourage us to think more broadly. And I certainly think we should explore all possibilities. I mean, my, my view is that we should work with, with the school to solve their problems. And that's absolutely in the town's interests. And the last thing I want to do is try to forestall that now. And, but I do think at the same time, we should try to engage in a broader conversation about whether there's a win win here for the town and the school district. That might, you know, also potentially be a win for Hartford. But I, I think to do that, we need to have dialogue, more dialogue, not less. And I wouldn't want to take any options off the table at this point.
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, I'm not saying that, that, not to discuss that, I'm just saying like. You know, it seems like the, the school board is, is thinking about other options too. Because the town of Hartford thing is, is far from a done deal that they'll accept and this will work out. So as, I think that became, you know, a bigger if after the select board meeting with Hartford. I mean, I, I watched it and I was like, oh, you know, I'm not getting warm, huggy feelings here. And I don't know, I, I can't predict. I don't know these conversations that have, you know, gone on that I haven't watched. But that's my concern. And so I, I wonder as a planning commission, if we have these conversations with the school board. If they just need to be broader than only focusing on a sewer. And that's, and that's been my concern. You know, as we've been investigating all of this further, and I thought a lot of good stuff came out of Jackie's PowerPoint. Just like, okay, you know, what are we looking at? What does the, you know, what are the towns' needs as well as the schools' needs? And how can those maybe go together and what, what outcomes, you know, would be good and beneficial to both? Brian, did you?
Yeah, thanks, Melissa. And thanks, Jeff. And thanks, Tom, for that present, presentation. As I've told several of the folks here on the commission, you know, the. I have a six year old who's now in kindergarten and playing on the green. And my hope and dream is that my now one year old doesn't have to play on the green in the same situation. And I, I don't want to be here five years from now having the same conversation. So I'm, I'm more than willing to have the planning commission support. The school's investigation of any solution that works and that can be accomplished quickly. When I watched the video of, of the February ninth Hartford Select Board meeting. I got, you know, the impression that of course you are still pursuing other options. But you wouldn't have been at that meeting if you weren't strongly invested in that Hartford option. And thought it was at least one of the top possibilities. And the other takeaway I had was that it seemed like your pitch, as it were. Was really hamstrung by, as Jeff Lubel called it, really the narrowness of the, of the proposal. And that's the school with the three businesses you identified. And that many of the benefits actually have an inter municipal agreement. You could think of it more accurately as a co-investment. Many of the benefits to Hartford only come from a broader conversation and a broader partnership. Than, than the narrow one that's part of the current proposal. So I, I, again, I'm happy to go down the road of finding a quick. Meaningful and successful solution to the challenge on the green. But if, if it, if it's the school's determination that really their best course of action is Hartford. I, I think your, your case is only helped. With, with your counterparts in, in Hartford. If you can kind of stand on the shoulders of a, a more inclusive, a broader plan on behalf of the town.
Melissa, if I may.
Uh, go, sure. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, I don't, I, I agree with everything Brian said. But there, there's, I, I'm not going to address factual issues and product that was part of this packet. That said. I personally worked on the family place connecting to the town of Hartford. It's a Norwich facility. There's no inter municipal agreement. And I, and I'm sorry, Mary, I'm going to say this wrong, but the universalist church, Unitarian church. Also has a connection. There's no inter municipal agreement. And. And, and by the way, if I'm speaking as a, as a, as a member of the public or the planning commission, it's, it's not particularly relevant to me. I'm just trying to state some facts. Approaching the state and the town through two thousand nineteen about how this occurs. Didn't warrant an inter municipal agreement. Nonetheless, that's where the town is today. A town of Hartford is, is today, and that's fine.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. I just want to check in because before we get seconds, if Leah, Ernie or Jackie. Have anything they would like to say before people go for a second time?
I, I mean, I made my comment initially, so I'm all set.
Oh, sorry, you did. Then you don't get to talk. Leah, do you have anything to say? No pressure if you don't. I just want to check in with both of you because you haven't said anything yet.
Thank you. Some general comment first, just starting off by thanking Tom and Jeff Lubel for their summaries in the memo. And also thanking Jackie for putting together the slides. And for those who contributed to those slides, I thought it was a good visual example of a lot of information. I really appreciate it, especially the side by side comparisons. It helps spell out some detail. Because I think it helps with the overall discussion that we're having and we have had in the past. Some people were discussing more linearly and now we can broaden it out and to look in comparisons and see where we're at now. So I initially looking at all of that information together and from what some people have said today. And also in comparison to listening to the February Hartford Town Meeting Discussion on, on this topic. Where I'm at with some of what was stated in our packet information is I too agree that I want to look at. Solutions and or the best solution for an effective and successful. Appropriately timed solution. It may not just be that one. I'm also concerned specifically about where we stand and hope we, as the planning commission, determine. Where we stand regarding Hartford's suggestion of, it seemed to be only wanting to work with the select board. So are we only giving recommendations to the select board or is part of our recommendation to the select board that we want to be part of that discussion? Because I'm just thinking of our meeting last week of forming this discussion of where we want to go and who's. Who's at the table? And I think that, I think we're at a good place now with all the information we've been looking at to determine. Who's at the table? Teddy bears that are now off screen. Who, who are the decision makers? And, you know, do we need to take the lead from Hartford's recommendations? I, I think we want to address some of those topics as well. And not to be a broken record, but my hope is as we continue this discussion, we're mindful of. Recommended timelines, et cetera. We should make this decision by this timeframe, et cetera. That way, we're not putting undue pressure on us and also we're doing something in a timely fashion.
Rod.
Let me just try and clear up a couple of questions coming from the planning commissioners and others about the work product that's contained in the packet. And what it's, what. My intentions along with Jackie were. So back in the last meeting, much of what was contained in. The document that I prepared, I spoke to in a much more informal way. And the. Request that I came away from the last planning commission meeting was, was to identify the pieces of the puzzle. And in some ways, what I prepared for you and circulated. Is indeed looking at key pieces of the puzzle. And I didn't know the answers to those questions when I, when I raised them, when I was preparing that material. And it led me down particular paths. I didn't have a preconceived idea of what the outcome was going to be. And then in the interim, as everyone knows and has talked about. And as many people have watched, Tom presented or responded to. A series of questions, I guess, from the Hartford Select Board with regard to pursuing in particular. Discussions around being able to, to, to sign a memorandum of understanding between the Norwich School District. And the town of Hartford. And. When that meeting concluded, the direction that Tom. With the guidance that Tom was given from the Hartford Select Board was that. Hartford would be open to proceeding with a discussion around the contents of an MOU. If it was able to understand that the Select Board of Norwich would be willing to enter, enter, enter into. A inter municipal agreement because it was their sense that they couldn't enter into. Just a memorandum of understanding with the school district and have the school district as a client. With the extension of the sewer, the way it was discussed for, for legal reasons. And so Tom reached out to Claudette and Herb and myself the day after. And there was some discussion amongst us about how, you know, what our obligations were in terms of other meetings and how soon we could get together. And the direction that was taken was that. That because the planning commission was already discussing the broad topic and the broad issues associated with wastewater in Norwich as a whole. That this topic specifically, the Marion Cross proposal with the three other properties should be. Dealt with in, in this form. And so. The most pressing task was to review the proposal from the, from the Norwich School District. The so-called, you know, high flow, narrow, narrow scope project that I referred to in, in my document. So that's Marion Cross School and three private properties along Route Five South. And so I investigated whether. The funding sources that were identified in that proposal were legitimate and likely to provide support. And what the restrictions on the, if, if those funds are accessible, what the restrictions would be. And then that raised, as I pointed out in the memo, particular process, process questions. Including public outreach and community and identifying community benefit. And so I don't want to go through that page by page, but the last part there, which is less explained. Because it was an expectation that I make a, a kind of a visual presentation is that there's, there's a map showing. The proposed system of connecting Marion Cross, the three properties and then going down to Hartford. Then there's a couple of, there's three other maps which indicate different scenarios that could be pursued in different ways. And I guess that they all speak to the question that the planning commission's been grappling with, not just since. Late last year, but in fact, well before my time, as far back as. Discussions around the, the, the previous, the previous town plan. The late two thousands timeframe. And so I'm gonna just outline one more time again, because I did it the last meeting and I've done it repeatedly. That there is a way of proceeding with this. It's the, the, there is a commitment to doing a wastewater study in the town plan. That wastewater study would be something that could be funded by the state. That would turn up information that would be helpful to the community to discuss the future of land use and wastewater. Because they relate to each other so deeply. And it would also provide the community, the town of Norwich with the kind of information. That if they're going to attempt to negotiate with a neighboring municipality, they would have accurate. Engineering information that would inform a meaningful discussion with any other entity that would be interested in doing it. And of course, in both instances, thinking of both Hanover and, and Hartford, they reserve the right to decline. You know, and that's something that, that Norwich needs to probably sit with a little while and accept the possibility. That even in the best of circumstances, the answer may still be no. But that was the purpose of the work. And I regret that I didn't have time to get it out to Tom. Or others from the school district prior to putting it in the packet. And that I apologize for that, but I, you know, that, that was the purpose of the work. So there's two things that came together there. Direction from the select board for, for me as an employee of town. And then also the updating of the, of the planning commission on the so-called pieces of the puzzle. I'm happy to talk to people more about what those pieces of the puzzle might mean.
Can you see Tom?
Yeah, we were limiting this part of the discussion just to planning commission members.
Okay.
And then we'll get back to the, to the public afterwards, but Jeff LaBelle had his hand up.
Thank you. Rod, thank you for your analysis, helpful to surface question, the questions that you did. I am concerned though that we. I, I, I think it was appropriate to raise questions. I, I am concerned that we. You know, are rendering a judgment before hearing from the school district. And I don't think that that's the best way to get off on a good footing with the.
All due respect, Jeff, they're just facts. Okay. It's just a factual analysis. It's not a conversation, conversation with the school's not going to change that outcome.
Yeah, Ron, with all due respect, let's vet the facts.
If I could finish, I, I, I just think that to me, what's important is to have a dialogue with the school district and to hear them out. And I think that consistent with that dialogue. Is giving them an opportunity to sort of review and comment on, on your views and, and having a dialogue and seeing. You know, if everyone's on the same page and if there's disagreements, et cetera. That's all. I'm not. Trying to say, you know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't ask these questions. I think it's perfectly appropriate to do so. I, I, I just am trying to prioritize the relationship of the town and the school district. Which I think is extremely important. I don't think the town would be the town without the school as part of it. And I just want to be on good terms with them. It doesn't mean we have to agree with them. It does mean that I, I would like to, you know, make sure that we give them an opportunity to review and respond to your memo. And, you know, a, an opportunity to discuss further. And, and then I guess my, my second point is, is I think it's really premature for the Norwich Select Board. for the Norwich Select Board to be talking with the Hartford Select Board about these issues. I think there's there's more conceptualization that's really needed to figure out, as as Rod said in his memo, there are these other options. And I think we should be thinking broadly about the needs of Norwich and not just narrowly about the specific proposal. And I think we can do that really quickly. I don't think something that needs to take two years. But I I think it would be a mistake to try to just say we're going to focus only on the proposal that the school has put forward without thinking about whether there might be a larger win-win that could be a benefit for the downtown businesses, a benefit for the people who live in the immediate downtown area, benefit for affordable housing for the town. So I would like to the opportunity for us to explore those options with the school before before, you know, our select board talks to them about an agreement, because like what? What's the content of the agreement? It seems to me still up in the air. And the final point I would make is I do think ultimately, there really ought to be an intermunicipal agreement between the town of Norwich and the town of Hartford. I don't know what the content of that agreement is, but it seems to me that there are going to be other people that are going to ask to connect to the sewer. It's just inevitable. And there ought to be a legal framework for having that conversation and for and for thinking about and prioritizing those proposals. So that the needs of Hartford are met and the needs of Norwich are met. And that that may mean that we think about ways to limit that. So that there's, you know, we don't necessarily open up the floodgates, but we have it, you know, be the kind of growth that makes sense for the town. So I I do think ultimately that would be really useful. I think that having a joint conversation between our planning commission and their planning commission could be the beginning of of what could be a long process that leads to that. But ultimately, I think we should have an intermunicipal agreement, but I just can't say that right now that I know what the content is.
Okay, Jackie, you had your end up next.
Yeah, I I I just want to advocate getting our own house in order before we talk to any other towns. I mean, I think that's really important that we all get on the same page. And I think win-win is terrific. I'm all for that. I think there are benefits town and school can both have if we work together. But I also think maybe a way to help organize this discussion, what jumps out for me is the funding sources. And there are the devils in the detail. There are very specific requirements for getting any financial help with an investment as large as a sewer system. And whether we could qualify is 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 questionable. There are lots of questions around that. And so before, you know, if we have options on the table, we ought to look at what are the potential funding sources for each of those options. And maybe anything outside the sewer is we're on our own. But we have to, I think we have to really pay attention to that. And I don't know that that's been paid attention to enough so far. That would be my comment.
Yeah, thanks, Jackie. Leah?
Yeah, to add to what Jackie and Rod were saying about putting pieces of a puzzle together, I kind of see that as part of the role that we're we're playing, whether we're putting a, you know, a spreadsheet or a chart together saying, you know, these are the key questions. These are the answers that we have or that are missing that we we need to find ourselves or bring through guests that we're partnering with and asking. I think some of those questions have been answered, but some of them, as what we planned from last month's meeting, some of them still need to be answered. And we can, it sounds like we're looking to finding those answers. It's just who's doing the the work to find them.
Leah, do you have any suggestions, organization-wise, organizationally, like how we should go about doing that? I I heard rumors that you put together some good process questions.
I think, I think there are a lot of people on the planning commission who are very organizationally minded and process minded. But I, you know, I think, and I'm happy to be help helping. But essentially, I think it's continuing from the conversation that we had last month of key question, do we have the information or the facts? If we don't, if it's if that is left blank, can let's fill it. So I'm just thinking visually right now, format visually. Is the data text cell clear or is it filled with text? And I I can defer to the others who have already started work, happy to help in any way. But that's visually how I'm figuring it out, not only for ourselves, but I'm also thinking down the line of potential need to answer questions or put FAQs together for any outreach or public discussion. Like quick and simple, these are the questions. This is some answer. And this is where we got it. You know, that's kind of what I'm thinking. And happy to collaborate and have other input from others.
Yeah, I think that sounds like a great direction to go in. And I I think, like you said, a lot of it was spelled out in the PowerPoint that Jackie put together. And just defining what those next steps and what research we need to do to to put those answers with the questions and know that we have sufficient data to start moving forward. Does anyone else have any other, or Jackie, did you have a thought?
Yeah, I just, you know, want to hear from everybody, but I also want to, we've talked a while now. I would like to hear more from the school board and from Tom and his thoughts.
Okay, are we, we're good with our discussion to the PC only? We're open to?
Melissa, if I may?
Yes, Jeff.
I'd love to talk to Leah about the facts.
Um, okay, as a member of the PC?
Since I am a member of the PC, yes.
Okay, I'm just making sure, because earlier you talked in your public, a member of the public capacity. So if you're speaking as a member of the PC, then now would be the time. And if not, we'll open it back up to the public.
So Melissa, with all due respect, there was a public comment period where I said, if I am interrupted or if I hear hate speech directed toward me effectively, I'm going to sign out. Subsequent to that, I am a member of the PC.
Okay. Are you talking to all of us or just talking to Leah? You said you wanted to talk to Leah?
So if Leah is interested in pursuing facts, I would be delighted to talk to Leah about facts and developing documents for the PC that that are based on facts.
Outside of the meeting or right now, I'm I'm just confused what you're saying.
So since you've engaged Rod and Jackie outside of the meeting, and we are entitled to do that without violating open meeting law.
That's not what I said.
Interrupting me, I'm gonna sign out if you want to interrupt me. I'd be delighted to talk to Leah outside of this meeting about facts.
That I am clarifying that that's not what I did. I scheduled, checked in to see the status of their work so I could form the agenda. Jeff is gone? Okay, all right. Well, then I clarifying for others, I checked in to see how the agenda was. I actually did not receive the materials until you all did. Leah, did you have?
Brian has had his hand up too, just.
Okay, Brian?
Sure, I would just invite Tom and Jamie during the public comment. Maybe to talk about your own thought process in going with the proposal that you did. And and perhaps your openness to kind of taking one step back, as it were. And, you know, you know, being open to thinking more broadly in terms of the proposal you take to Hartford. You know, just kind of sense of where you are and and how you ended up there. And if that's kind of open for discussion on your end.
Great. Okay, well, if everyone's ready, then I will open it back up to public comments. Is there any public comment?
I'm I'm sorry, Melissa, can I, just as a a process point. Are we, are we moving into the public comment period? Or are we just moving to a phase, we're still within the agenda item, but we are now allowing?
Public, the public to speak.
Okay, good. I just want to make clear, because I think we should still stick on this topic. We haven't.
Yeah, no, we're not.
We need to make a decision at the end about what we want to recommend. Okay.
Yeah.
I think it's a great idea to get the town. So why don't we turn to them?
I turned, I turned to the town.
Tom?
Okay, so, yeah. Confused. I'm getting confused between the public, the invited board member, you know, sorry about that. Thank you, though. I'm happy to respond. I do want to, so with regard, I will admit some frustration with regard to the packet and the memo that you received today. And with all due respect, Rod, while while you say they're facts here, they're facts without context and they're facts without even a discussion with the school board. And that would be one thing, if it didn't provide a recommendation at the end, to not recommend discussions with the Hartford Select Board. And that's where I take issue with this and the lack of even courtesy reach out to the board, school board, to let us know in school district that this was happening. So that's where I came in frustrated. It, you know, again, one thing, if you've got the facts outlined, it's it's very helpful, I'm sure, for the planning commission here. When you end it with a recommendation, that changes the whole scope of things. With regard to moving forward in what Brian was just asking about, I think Jeff was earlier and maybe Jackie too, in terms of the scope of the discussion with Hartford. I I understand a lot of people on this call were also on the call or on the meeting we had with Hartford on February ninth. I know Hannah Tyler, Department of Public Works, has joined us here this evening as well. What I heard was that there was deep concern over opening those supposed floodgates. If there was any agreement with Norwich. And and I thought a smaller opportunity for connection was that is, has been our goal from the beginning, because that is what the school needs at this point in time. Because it needs to make that connection down Route Five South. Those area businesses there were approached to see if we could collaborate on that connection there. But again, like I heard at the February ninth meeting, there was concern expressed by members, town officials there, as well as select board members. That may all change because there's a new town manager there. And that is also on our agenda to meet the new town manager. And I hope to do so soon. And obviously, there's some new select board members as well. So maybe things have changed in that regard. I'm happy to reengage on that discussion and fully plan to do so. While at the same time, as I said before, we fully intend to keep looking into other options, should that one not remain feasible. In terms of the next steps with that, I also heard what we discussed earlier was that they, the Hartford Select Board wanted us to make sure that we were working with the town of Norwich. What we do need to do, and what I said before, was that we need to figure out what that exactly means based upon the current proposal that's on the table, which is Marion Cross School and the three area businesses. So again, coming back to this recommendation that was put before you, I'm I am frustrated because I haven't had that opportunity to speak with the Norwich Select Board or people in town who would weigh in on our next steps in that regard. And for now, I'll just, I'll leave it at that, because we have not had that opportunity.
Uh, Jackie, I think I saw your hand up.
Tom, I really, it's helpful to hear your perspectives. Where would you want to go from here? Where where do you want to go from here?
Well, I I would first go from here. And I, my understanding is that you're not taking on this recommendation this evening to pass along to the Norwich Select Board that you don't think we should go ahead. I would appreciate you're not doing that so that I can actually talk with the Norwich Select Board to get their input on what they think about the possibilities moving forward here. So that's, that would be just stage one for me.
Okay, Jeff, I saw your hand up next, LaBelle.
I I think to be very clear, Tom, I don't think there has been a decision about what recommendation we're gonna make. So just just from a process standpoint, we haven't entertained any kind of motion or whatever. I I I, my question is whether you're open to having a conversation about what a partnership between the school district and the town might look like, that might reconceptualize the proposal at some point and think about a proposal that might meet a broader range of town needs as well as the school's needs. I'm not saying that there will be, at the end of the day, an agreement in that way, or I can't say that it's necessarily the right approach or not the right approach. But I I really think it's the right approach to have that conversation and to think about it and to conceptualize it. And I would be interested to know whether you are, guys are open to having that conversation.
Melissa, do you want me to just respond or do you want me to go through? You?
I, I, Jeff, I I was just, when would you be having this conversation? I'm just not, are you asking to have this conversation now?
Well, I I we can't solve everything in one meeting. I mean, the question is, like, to me, it's just abundantly clear that the, in my view at least, that the right way to approach this is to try to think about whether there's an alignment between the interests of the school district and the discussions and the interest that the town has had about trying to think about a broader solution to the wastewater needs of the downtown. And it seems to me that there ought to be some exploration of whether there's there, there, maybe there is, or maybe there isn't. And we could start that conversation now. But if the school district tells me that they're not interested in having that conversation, that would be very helpful to know, because then we'll just won't have it. That I would be very disappointed, but that's, I I can't make a decision for them. So yes, I do have a question for Tom about whether that's something that the school district would be interested in conversation, they'd be interested in entertaining. We could start it now and then we could talk about what the right forum is. But you seem still confused by my question. I I don't.
Well, I'm just confused if we've made any progress as a planning commission to where we're at. And so if we're ready to have that conversation.
I I Melissa, I have a question for Tom. I would like to know if that would be something they would like.
Okay, I, go ahead, Jeff.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Tom, do you want to respond to that?
Oh, sure. So, you know, ultimately, it's going to be up to what Hartford is willing to listen to. So, you know, our proposal is the one that's on the table now. I would like to hear from the current town manager there, the new select board, if they're willing to consider the proposal that's currently on the table first.
Uh, Rod, you have your hand up. You're on mute.
Thanks, Melissa. Sorry. Let me try and be really clear here. I'm and I'm gonna indicate that I'm that I'm serving two different roles. And try and frame my remarks so that people make really clear about the two different roles that I'm performing while I'm here, as well as being the minute taker and the clerk. So that's, I guess that's five roles. So, number one, my terms of employment are that I'm I'm employed by the town manager at his pleasure. And he answers to the select board. So I have functions and responsibilities as the planning director for the town of Norwich that are directly related to my employment contract through the town manager and the select board. This is a matter of of interest to the select board. And I was asked by the chair of the select board to provide information on the proposal as it's been outlined by Tom in several venues. And appears to be no dispute as to what the contents of the proposal are. Separate to that, I've been working with you as the person that resources the planning commission for several years now, through more than three years, on the very question of what to do about land use and the relationship between land use and wastewater. And so the conclusion in the report that's that I provided that's included in this packet concluded that the funding sources that this proposal is a very narrow proposal that Tom is asking support for are not viable. If you set the questions about funding viability aside and assume for the sake of the discussion that there's no problem with the funding, there's still a set of questions that go to the question of process, which are also not able to be resolved the way the school board would like them to be resolved. And to be eligible to receive the funds, you'd need to address those process concerns and those process considerations. That's the find, the two key findings. And they're based on a on a clear reading of the requirements of the VCDP program and the other programs identified for funding. The other key remark here that's really important and goes to the question of the maps at the end of that presentation is that there is a deep public policy question that's raised here. The school would like a narrow focus that benefits three private property owners and the school in a short-term resolution of the school's perceived problem with the septic system that they have. And the problem that this, that the select board will have, and that the planning commission should be engaging in directly is, should you, as a public body, be engaging in a commitment to favor some private property owners over other private property owners with the use of public funds? And that's what I'm asking you to address in that document. So those are the fundamental issues that are associated with the proposal that's put forward by the school. It's not to say that I don't take seriously the school's issues with the septic system. It's not to take, it's not to say that I don't take seriously the public health considerations that this whole situation raises. What I'm saying is, unavoidably, if you're gonna follow appropriate public process, this will take time. This will require engagement. This will require engagement and these issues will need to be attended to. As a matter of my employment status, I will be providing this recommendation directly to my boss and the select board because that's what I'm being asked to do. So whether or not the planning commission resolves, whether to accept my recommendation, set it aside or reject it. That's recommendations already been made and gone to the select board. Okay, it's a matter of public record, that's my position. You can disagree with me, that's fine too, that's your choice. But I want to make it really clear how I reach those conclusions and what it means. I narrowly said in the recommendation that this proposal is not viable. What I meant was that this narrow proposal of satisfying the school's needs and three private property owners needs in this proposal is not viable. Okay, so that doesn't mean to say that there's not a viable wastewater solution that resolves the school's issues. There are many ways of solving the school's issues, that's what needs to be discussed, the school's not the only. Stakeholder or interested party in that, in that outcome. And so as a planning commission, you're appointed to rep, to, to plan for the town. Those people that live on the edge of Hartford, that have got their own septic system, that never visit Norwich Village, that you will tax. Those people that have children in the school, they are both, both those households are people that you represent. You'll have to answer to them. And so I'm asking you to take on that, that task seriously and think about the public policy consequences of benefiting. Three private property owners in the interest of the school and disadvantaging other private property owners. Whether because you're asking them to pay for something that they don't have access to, or you're disadvantaging their property values and their, and their ability to develop. There are technical solutions to all these things, but I want you to address the public policy concerns that I've raised.
Thanks, Tom, I think you had your hand up.
Yes, thanks, and I'm sorry Rod, I'm still gonna take issue with the recommendation here because. You, again, you didn't talk to anyone from the school district and this is what's now put before the planning commission. I, I also am not clear on why this is timed as such. There hasn't even been the opportunity for me to go before the Norwich Select Board to have this discussion. So why, who tasked you to have the recommendation given within a four week period of when I met with the Hartford Select Board? It's what I'm trying to understand, there has been no opportunity to actually address any of the concerns that are raised. In your memo here.
The fact, the facts of the funding and the facts of the process don't change whether you, whether you're talk, whether you're talking or not.
Well, it changes if you're not understanding what we're asking here. The funding matters that you have outlined are ones that we say are possibilities to lower the cost. If you read the options that are in, and on the website that Marion Cross has on the SEU seventy site, we have notional amounts for the cost of the hookup. From those costs, we could potentially lower it. By addressing grants that might become available to us by working with the town.
I'm gonna be very explicit and really clear, there's no way you can get to yes on those grants on the basis of the rules that, that, the grants are provided with. So if you're talking about a estimate of two and a half million dollars over thirty years from the revolving loan front from, from DEC. That comes out at three hundred and sixty pain, three hundred and sixty payments of seven thousand dollars a month. Or two thousand three hundred dollars for each, for each of the participating. Members of this small system, so you know, if you're gonna add that to the school taxes, it's still a question for, for the, for the public to answer. I, you know, I, I'm, I'm being as clear and as kind-hearted as I can. Are you disputing the facts of what I'm saying about the, the application of the grant programs? Or are you just process that you're required to go through to actually gain access to those funds?
Do you mind if I keep responding?
Um, Brian, do you have something that's to contribute that's relevant here? I'm, I'm gonna ask Brian, let Brian say something here.
Okay. I know, Tom, that you have outstanding questions about many of the options that are before you. We have questions too. Just speaking for myself, I would be happy for the planning commission to help you. Explore the answers to any of those questions that you think are meaningful. For your decision making, I would hope that that would be done in the context of a larger town strategy. But I'm not. My, uh. At this point, comfortable in my knowledge enough to make any kind of recommendation to the select board or anybody else. And I don't think, my sense of the group is that shouldn't be concerned that that is going to be the outcome of this meeting. I think we, we want to have a conversation with you. We don't want to foreclose that conversation and, and your concerns with Rod's memo. I can, they are shared by some of us, don't need to be addressed here in this meeting.
Yeah, and I would say if you want to, if you want to respond to. Rod's memo, we'd be more than happy to get a response and review it. I just don't know that this, as Brian said, is the, is the best way to do it. I don't know if we can, you know, process all this information because we're not as immersed as it, in it, obviously as, as you and Rod were. So if you would, if you would like to submit a response, we would be very glad to review it. Um, I, sorry, Jamie had her hand up next and then I'll get to you, Jeff. Jamie, did you want to?
Yeah, I just had a quick question and I fully realize I'm not a taxpayer in Norwich and I just work for the school district. So Rod, I just have a question to follow up the information that you've just. Shared with everyone here and, and have shared with the, the select board. So obviously you feel there's maybe an ethical issue. Public policy concern, whatever you want to, you know, call it about the potential offset funding that we had mentioned. After meeting with some of the folks up in, up in Montpelier, I think it was. So let's set that aside, let's just hypothetically say Jamie wins Powerball and has enough money to pay for this system in a donation type of situation. Would your recommendation therefore potentially change about, you know, the select board entering into. An inter-town agreement in order to take care of the needs of this, you know, narrow scope that we've. That we've laid out there?
Basically no, because you, you're not addressing the land use implications of searing. Part of, part of some land and not others, you could control it with. Allocation mechanisms to get technical about it, you could, you can set an allocation. So you could say that in any one year, Norwich is, for the next five years, Norwich will not exceed sending, sending so many gallons per day. To the Hartford wastewater, wastewater system, you could, you could gauge it and you could limit it.
Sorry, Rod.
That will be reviewed in five years' time or something such as that.
Jamie, I'm not sure that this is the most productive use of our time, I, I.
But, 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 but policy question, it doesn't go away because your properties are not others.
You guys can, can do hypotheticals offline if you want, but I, I want to keep this moving. Um, I think Jeff, LaBelle, you had your hand up next, I believe, I, I'm.
Yeah, I, I did, I actually found that discussion helpful, so thank you, Rod and Jamie. I, I would just say that I, um, you know, I. I, I'm disappointed that the school district is not interested in entertaining a broader conversation. About how to think about this proposal maybe in a different way that might. Meet a broader range of needs and I would just, I understand why, that you're very invested in it and I understand it, I would just. Urge you to take some time and think about it. Because my recommendation to the select board personally would be that it's premature to make a decision that we don't have to like act tomorrow. There's, you know, I certainly would like to hear what the school district has to say in response to Rod's. Memo, but I also would like to, you know, we have a, 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 a need to have a broader conversation here. And I certainly agree with Rod that there is a way to envision an inter-municipal agreement that would limit the floodgates so they don't have that fear. And people would have a moderate growth scenario rather than a large growth scenario and. So I, I, I hope you reconsider as you, you know, after you think about your options going forward.
Okay, um, Jamie.
Sorry, very quickly, Jeff, I don't think that the school district is saying no, absolute. I think that Tom, as Chair of the school district, to contemplate anything like that would need to go back to his full board and have that discussion. So that's, it's not that, you know, that we wouldn't contemplate that, it's that, you know, he needs to go and have a discussion with his full board. And secondly, when we initially started discussions with Leo Puller at the town of Hartford. It wasn't an option for us to broaden the scope and invite everybody and their brother to hook up, they were not interested in that. So therefore we took our cues at that point in time, you know, really from them. And again, I'll say again, at that point in time, you know, as one of your, your board members, one of your committee members mentioned. You know, we need to get our house in order and I think Norwich at that point in time at the town level was not ready either, right? So we did what we did because, you know, we needed to move forward, so that's all, thank you.
It makes a lot of sense.
Uh, Roger, I think I saw your hand up.
Uh, yes, thank you, so I'm Roger, um, now. Luckily, Chair of, of the Norwich Select Board and Mary Layton is our Vice Chair. Um, and so four members of the board have been here, we're all behaving ourselves, right, kudos, kudos to us. Um, so I, I just want to say, I know that there has been some. Expressed frustration on how this conversation came about, but I want to emphasize, one of my main concerns. As Chair of that governing body is the governance of these conversations. No matter how they continue and I would say that this kind of public meeting with this kind of embracing of real conflict. Is the exact kind of meeting that is, that is important. Under the current climate of many alleged O N L violations. And so I keep hearing, continuing to have a conversation, we'll have a conversation, I want to invite, that is all well and good, but as Chair of this body. You know, as, as Jamie, I appreciate alluded to earlier, you know, we as chairs, vice chairs will only have conversations for the sake of agenda setting and preparing for a meeting. And that, you know, all of these conversations have to then go back to like a full representation. So I really, that's the only thing that I will do, there's so many things I think that we all individually, our board members probably want to say. But I, I just want to encourage that kind of governance, like someone may or may not, I do not know yet, reach out to me about this. And I would say for the purposes of agenda setting, for the purposes of preparing a packet, I'm happy to talk about what that might look like. Okay, so I just wanted to, that's where I am, I wanted to say, I don't know if that is appropriate or relevant, but thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Uh, Stuart Richards?
Stuart Richards, eighty-two Elm Street, I'd like to thank Tom and Jamie for sticking with this through what are some. The issues are, are pretty thorny, they're pretty difficult. And the same thanks actually to the planning commissioners for spending all this time and effort. And I, I can only say that I'm happy that I haven't had to spend all the hours that you guys have spent, guys and girls have spent. Over a long period of time, but there were, there were some. Questions that I would like to raise and they. I did not attend the, the Hartford meeting, but I did read the minutes. And, and it just seemed to me that Hartford was not very thrilled with the idea of, of. Allowing a Norwich hookup or wanting to work with Norwich to have a hookup. And am I misunderstanding that? I mean, we, we keep talking about the Hartford hookup. And it just didn't seem to me that we were getting a very, very warm reception and. Tom, would you mind commenting on that or, I, I mean, am I just misunderstanding that?
I think it's up to Melissa to determine what the order of the speaker is.
Is it okay for, I mean, ask me to respond to anything, just Melissa, let me know what you want.
Yeah, if Tom, if you're comfortable and want to respond, please do.
I had a couple of other points afterward, thank you.
Okay, yeah, well, story, I'll go back to what I said earlier, that was a concern that was expressed by both the Public Works Director and some of the members of the select board at the time.
Did you come, did you come away with the overall impression that, that the door was still open or, and that we should pursue, pursue this?
Well, yeah, that's why we're here right now is because I understood that as long as we were to work with the town in approaching Hartford, that there was still an option to consider a way ahead. And, and like I said too, now that there is a new town manager there and, and several new select board members. Maybe there will be some other considerations about the pros and cons of what we're requesting. Yeah, and, and like I've always said to this process, Stuart, and you know well, is I don't want to take anything off the table until we've reached the best conclusion.
And I think that's a fair, I think that's a fair approach, I, I have never disagreed with that. As just one member of the public, speaking as one person, I've never disagreed with that, with that approach, trying to find the best. Trying to find the best solution and recognizing, I think, that, that the solution that works the best is the one that fits the school. And, and that, you know, when Jeff Lubel talks about. The wastewater needs of the downtown. Uh, I think that that's, that's a kind of a statement that ignores the fact that there aren't, that there is no environmental need.
Stuart, I'm, I'm not trying to cut you off, but did you have additional questions just because we're running out of time? And I just wanted to make sure if you had additional questions that we could get to them.
Well, I did have one more question and that, that relates to Huntley Meadow specifically. And I'm just wondering where that might stand, whether you're thinking about doing some testing at Huntley Meadow?
Are you asking Tom?
Yes, if that's possible.
Again, we've got a number of places in town that we need to consider for options. Huntley Meadow had been mentioned, whether or not it's going to rise to the top of our list of places that will actually conduct the testing on, it's still to be determined, I think.
Great, all right, thank you, Stuart and Tom. Um, I think at this point, we need to talk about what our plan is for our next meeting and, and what our next steps are. What does anyone want to throw, anything out there, how we should proceed, Brian?
Yeah, I'm. I, I want to be helpful, I want there to be, to be a next step, but at the same time, I don't hear Tom asking for anything. Other than to talk to the select board and. And, and that's on the, the school track, on the wider town conversation. As folks have mentioned, the, you know, achieving the objective in the town plan. I, I, that, that. Reexamining that study, you know, we still should pursue that, it's, it's a shared objective embraced by the select board and the regional planning commission. And if the study that Rod has identified is part of that. Perhaps we go back to evaluating that option as we wait to hear if the school has a more specific request.
Okay. Uh, Bea?
Uh, I have a recollection from our last month's meeting, vague recollection that we were thinking as the planning commission to. Provide updates on this topic to the selects board, so I am well aware that a large member of the select board are present here, but I would think in our written body. I would, I would hope that, I would like us to write some sort of summary or have the Chair of the Planning Commission write some sort of summary to the select board as. Where we stand right now, what, you know, we, we had a discussion, we had some updates, we had Tom and Jamie attend and this is what we're thinking of doing. So at least doing, at least providing some sort of update to the select board, especially given the fact that in this discussion today. I've at least heard Tom suggest that he wants to talk to select board, so just keeping it on record. That we're a part of the discussion too, in some way, some summary, I don't have any text to propose right now, I'm just saying after people have chatted. I, I would like to see some sort of official update to the select board.
Yeah, that seems like a good idea, with the select board, Chair of the select board, maybe. Uh, well, I can provide it whether they, they would like it or not, actually. So. So that is something that I could, I could work on and even bring to the next meeting and you guys can review it. And then I could, um, yeah, I could, I could write that. Jeff?
Yeah, I would love to review that. I mean, I do think it's, it would be helpful to see if we, if it's coming from the Planning Commission. I, I guess I, I, I would, I don't know if we need a motion or not, but I, I think my main message is like, there's no immediate need to reach a resolution tomorrow about whether all the, the Hartford Select Board up and say, we want to do an inter-municipal agreement the way the school wants. I mean, I think that we should urge there to be a focused period of analysis here. So not that this should stretch on for months and months and months, but that it doesn't need to happen tomorrow. At a minimum, we need to hear the school's, you know, response to Rod's memo.
I, I'm under the impression that, that, that we're all on the same page with that.
I think so.
If anyone isn't, speak up now, but I, I, that's where I thought we were all going.
That seems to be the consensus. And I would just also urge us to think about this a little bit more broadly and, and think about whether there's a possibility for a win-win that might help the school district and help the town and, and, and help Hartford. And, and I, I don't feel like we've done enough exploration of that, of that option.
Well, yeah, I, I, to me, I don't see anyone opposing that. I think we're, we're all open to researching that and working with the school board if, if possible. And so, yeah, it's just the ways that we go about doing that research and, and coming up, you know, doing what we can do. So if there's any other suggestions for things that we should be doing, I'm open to hearing them. Is there anything else we, well, let me go back to my agenda. Oh, sorry. Is there any other business? Brian?
Yeah, so, so maybe it's just a request for our next meeting's agenda item.
Yeah.
Can I ask for Rod to refresh our memory on that study and the funding stream? And describe what it would take from us as the Planning Commission to set that in motion.
Ju- just to be clear, so you mean the, the samples of studies that I brought to the last meeting? You want me to follow up on that? Is that what you're asking, Brian?
Yeah, the kind of going down that technical path with that potential funding. What, like what would the next step look like from the Planning Commission? I'd like to have a discussion about that. If you could be prepared to lead us in that, I would really appreciate it.
That'd be great. Yep, that, that would be a good direction. Thank you.
Thanks.
Can I just ask, and a slight amendment to that would just be, if you could just think about what would be the consequences if, if we're not sure that we want to move forward with sewer? And what are the cost implications of that? And how could this study be helpful for us in making a decision about whether to move forward? Because I, I, I think that's where we're a little bit different from the paradigms of those communities that you brought forward. They all knew they wanted to move forward. We're not sure. And I
Really quickly, it's about 35 or 40 grand. You get it back if you build something or join somebody. You don't get it back if you just say that was a nice study. But you know, a different way of thinking about that is up against $2.5 million for a single pipe for one and a half miles, you know, forty, or it's not even a full police cruiser, you know? Like, there's not a whole lot of things you get for 40 grand in the municipal world. You get this really flashy study that engages people around the wastewater question, which done properly would shape our land use regulations and shape the future of the town, whatever direction it ends up taking us in for, you know, 20 years. So, you know, it's, it's a lot, it's a lot of money, but it, it's, it's a valuable piece of work that probably is overdue in Norwich, I would say. Probably it should have been, you know, I think that my predecessor asked people to get behind this idea. I think it's, it seems to be a pivot point. And so anyway, I can bring that information, but it's about 35 or 40 grand.
Yeah. Yeah. Um.
Melissa, Jack, Jackie's kind of waving. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, as I recall, that's what, you know, because the discussion we had at the last meeting, that's what it boils down to. Are we willing to risk as a town $35,000 or $40,000 to do this study? As Rod just pointed out, we get that money back if we proceed forward with a big project, but we, we have to pay it out of town money if we don't. And, um, also to the point that was just made, it's something that I think is overdue and the town could greatly benefit by. You know, we're about to work on, um, we have a lot in front of us in terms of our zoning regulations and everything else. And having a, a, a scientific understanding of our wastewater situation, um, I think is long overdue.
Yeah, I think that's a good point.
Non-sympathetic sources of shared understanding, yeah.
Yeah. Leah, did you have something?
I have an agenda question for next week. It's either for next month or the month after. It's sounding like we're
Not next week.
Right. It's sounding like we're going into, you know, the agreement of just more discussion. And I would just like clarification for the agenda if, especially for next month, are we looking at our agenda to be more review of information? Or are we looking at perhaps a working session where we're putting pieces together and we're actually doing things? That, that's what I'm trying to figure out here. Maybe the answer's not there. I, I'm just.
I think that's a really good question. Jackie, did you want to respond to that?
For our next agenda, we finalize this summary to the Select Board of this meeting as well as our recommendation on the wastewater study. And then we, we get it on the agenda and go to the Select Board meeting with it as soon as possible after we finalize it at the next meeting. That's what I would suggest.
I agree to that, yeah.
That sounds good to me. Anyone disagree here? Are we pretty good on that?
I just, I just have a feeling that there are more things we're going to be talking about. And so I'm just trying to clear my head about that as far as agenda.
Rod, you had something, Rod?
It's a different topic. Actually, it's all about you, Jackie.
It's your birthday.
Um, you get to consider your future career. So your term runs out really soon. And so
Oh, yeah.
It's just a reminder and then, uh,
Okay.
An indication to everybody else that, um, yeah, your term's about to expire. Um, so maybe you want to give some thought to your future.
Thank you.
Here, yeah.
Is it, is it just my term? Remind me?
You're the only one on the Planning Commission whose term's about to expire, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
But you know, you can, it's like Hotel California and you can check out, but you can never leave, right?
Uh, Jeff, LaBelle?
Can I just add one more thing to Rod's list when you're preparing for this next meeting? I, one of the questions and concerns I have about a sewer study is the timeline for it. And I'm worried about delaying the school district in ways that would be detrimental to the health of the young people that go to the school. And so if you could just, as part of that discussion, help us think about what the timeline would be for getting funding and for doing the study and making a decision. And, you know, I just feel like if we're going to actually have a conversation in a manner that's timely for the school district, I, I'm worried about, about a long study. So I'm not saying you need to answer that now, but if that could be a really key question, like is there a way to design something that would be on a rapid docket that wouldn't delay the school? That would be really helpful from my perspective.
Yeah. Okay. Any other agenda items? Um, Brian?
And I'm happy to report back from the next town care meeting, which is.
All right. That would be great.
You should have an affordable housing. You should probably have it just as a standing item to update you on the different subcommittees.
Do we now have to also add that, well, not yet, the Energy Task Force, but.
Yeah. And if any other committees. Do you want me to make up a committee for you to be on too? And just, we'll, we'll have an update on committees, whether they're real or not.
All other duties as needed.
Awesome. Okay, other, other business. Ernie, you got some other business?
Oh, oh, not other businesses, just I was going to add to that I'd be adding a report from me to the, uh, from the Article 36 Energy Committee, assuming it meets sometime between now, then and now.
And we would like that. We will look forward to that, uh, that update. Oh, my internet connection is unstable. So, um, future meeting schedules and agendas, we don't have one because we had talked about moving our meetings to Tuesdays and I don't know what Tuesday and, um, what's going on with that?
Right now, we're on for March 20th.
Let me send out a doodle poll or something horrible like that and can try and which Tuesday of the month suits them the best. The fifth, and I'm, I'm going for the fifth.
Okay. The fifth of, oh, I see.
It's Tuesday.
Got it.
That works for me.
Yeah.
The fifth of, of what, April?
The fifth Tuesday of the month.
Oh. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think it's past some of our bedtimes.
Oh, I had March 19th already set, but maybe I'm wrong.
We, 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 we're kind of open to revising it.
Got it. Got it.
Okay. All right. So a doodle poll will come out for the next meeting. Then we'll set a schedule from there. Is that what we're thinking? Okay, great. Thank you.
And Melissa, both Linda Gray and Stuart Richards would like to have their hands put down in that order, I think. Like Linda wants to talk and so does Stuart.
Oh God, see, I really am tired. I was like, they just want me to put their hands down? Um, okay, Linda Gray. Sorry, Linda.
Hi, thank, excuse me, thank you. I just wanted to let you know that the Energy Committee meets regularly the fourth Tuesday of every month. So please don't pick that Tuesday.
Thank you so much.
That's really helpful. Thank you. Stuart?
So I wanted to take a couple of minutes, not 15 certainly, to make some public comments and ask a couple more questions. Tom, if you can, can you give me an idea of, of the priority of the options that are being looked at? And if you can't do that at this time, can you give me an idea when, when you might be able to prioritize? It sounds like Hartford is, is a number one choice, if I'm not mistaken, but I might be mistaken. Melissa, you're okay.
Uh, go ahead, Tom, if you want to respond.
Okay, so Stuart, I, I wouldn't say that there's necessarily a priority order right now. Like I said, we're keeping everything on the table and whatever arises to the top is the best, most cost effective and option and the most helpful for solving this issue at the school is going to be number one.
And what's, what's the timeframe?
I, I said earlier, my goal, and again, one member of the North School Board's goal is Warren Article, next town meeting.
Okay, so whatever testing is going to occur would occur prior.
This spring.
Yeah, this spring.
Yeah.
Okay, great, thanks. So one other comment, and that, that goes back to what Jeff was saying about a win-win situation and trying to address the needs of the, of the downtown. The, um, the needs of the downtown seem to be met pretty well in terms of the onsite wastewater systems that exist. So I'm not sure whether you're thinking about an expansion of the downtown, either commercially or residentially. But as far as, as far as the environmental concerns relate to an expansion, there, there is no need for a, for a municipal wastewater system to satisfy the needs of the downtown. Because environmentally, those needs are being met pretty well at this time.
Are you at, Stuart, is that a question?
No, that's a comment.
Okay. Do you have a question for Tom?
No.
I've already asked a question.
Okay.
No.
All right. Do you have any further questions or?
No. We'll sit.
Okay. Does anyone else have any further questions from the public? Okay, at, at this time, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Would someone like to?
Yeah.
Well, Brian, if you want a second, you can go ahead. Thank you. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Thank you, Tom and Jamie for attending and everyone else for attending.
Thank you to everybody. Yeah, appreciate it.
And I
Bye-bye.